This meeting is now called the Road Call, please, Madam Curf.
Trustee Lewis.
President.
Trustee Nick Fett.
President.
Trustee Folcher.
President.
Trustee Thompson.
President.
Trustee Lewis.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
President.
Here he is.
Uh, President, I have to say, this is our clear for the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have one thing to comment that sorry, Jenkins, Bill, this bill.
I'm not recognizing Trump, I can't hear my mom.
Hello.
Okay, and just one second, I'll tell you something. And just for the record, uh, trustee Alicia Crager is attending by telephone.
No, I'm trusting.
No, I'm wasting the time.
Alicia Crager is attending by telephone.
Hi from work, I trusty is there. Village clerk happy to see you back.
Hi there.
Been missing, I'm missing you. Um, I wanted to come address the door today on several things. First of all, I want to thank you guys for having a wonderful Christmas been away this weekend. Chief Theo with shop on the top of the mayor's office, special for the kids getting all the children toys. It's been a wonderful holiday season so far. Today, I want to add to this also one more good thing. I attended the library celebration and it was very enlightening. I want to thank the whole entire library board for everything they've done to get the extension of the library open. And it was just a wonderful time and it was an extensive history lesson on the library. And we've come really far here in University Park and we have a lot further to go. Today, I had the opportunity, and it wasn't a good one, it was a very humbling experience. I had the opportunity to go to Metro Station and see the bus, what they were bringing the asylum seekers. As University Park sits here, I want us to understand that it was very common because we have homes that we can go to, lights that we can cut on, heat where we're warm, shoes on our feet, clothes on our back, and food to eat. And the thing about this is, is we need to welcome them. We need to put something in place because these are not cats and dogs. We can't put them in shelters and walk away and give them some food. We have to address the situation, however guys see fit, it still needs to be addressed. Also, I wanted to thank, take the time to thank trustee Williams for everything she's done. Trustee Jill Thomas, trustee Donna Folcher, trustee Lewis, trustee Nick Fett, and also our mayor and our village manager for feeding them today, uh, yesterday. They were very grateful, they were very humble, I took food today. And we just have to keep going, doing a little bit, I don't care what it is. They had no socks. We had children that were walking in the streets with no coats, babies with no snowsuits. And see, it was, it brought tears to my eyes, and still to this day right now, because they're humans. They're not dogs like I repeat or cats. They're human beings, and this village needs to not turn their back on them, but accept them and come up with a real holistic solution on how we can help them, even if it's going to a morning center. Even if it's being able to feed them a meal, they will be forever grateful. And this is the end of my discussion. I wanted to tell everybody, happy holidays, and hopefully and gratefully, we all see each other in 2024, and you guys have a happy and merry Christmas. And also one more thing, I'm not ready to help. So, happy belated birthday to trustee Brooks, I'm 25, I don't know when he gets, but I'm 25. Stay me out of a wonderful day.
And I just want to say happy birthday to you. And I still, still like a colleague, I can't, can't walk the street without saying trustee, so.
I'm 25.
25. Thank you, trustee, uh, thank you, Ms. Jenkins. All right, and thank you, Cruz, uh, for the comments, new business. This is an ordinance regulating unscheduled bus stops in University Park, Will and Cook County, Illinois, establishing regulations for unscheduled intercity buses and the discharge of passengers to ensure that health, safety, and welfare of residents and visitors to the village of University Park.
So.
Moved first, second by trustee Brooks, moved by trustee Lewis. Road call, questions?
So before the, so what is the process when the bus come out? Do you see that there is a situation where it's up there or maybe if you brief this out? So do you know exactly when they do arrive, if they do arrive, where they're gonna be directed to? And then also, um, Chief Mitchell, do we have the support for those, that area that they're coming in? If I hear they dropped them off at the golf course today, in the metro station, I mean, do we have the support, police support to manage, so are we working with the sheriff or anybody else?
So, I'll go first, but maybe you ask the trustee Brooks. So this is what's going on, the buses are unannounced right now. They have firing route to Illinois right now with no destination announced. It just happens to, we were fortunate enough yesterday, you say yesterday?
Yesterday.
That we were able to intercept the bus and they had asylum seekers on the bus. I think there were 40 of them, they were a mixture of Venezuelans and Ethiopians.
Yes.
If I'm not correct, so it's our obligation right now, when the buses come to University Park unannounced, until we have things in place, is there several locations that we can ask them to be sent to outside University Park? One of them is 800 South Des Plaines Avenue in the city of Chicago, where there are more resources. Also, there are locations in Dogson, Calumet City, that were just announced during the emergency meeting this afternoon. What was that?
No, that was separate.
That was something separate.
That was from Fable.
Disaster.
Oh, that's Fable, that's Fable, that's something completely different. So 800 South Des Plaines right now is where we would advise the buses to go to. And, or, and go have airport. So when the buses come to University Park unannounced, we're trying our best to ensure that they get to where they're supposed to go, where the resources are available to everybody, this matter of course.
Des Plaines Avenue.
It is.
800 South.
800 South Des Plaines in the city of Chicago. Uh, it's an unfortunate situation there in our community. We have now over 130 families. I think the last time we were all together, it was 114 families. And I then observed, I was fortunate enough to go to the bus, to the train station, and there was a car that pulled up, and some of the people that are getting off those big coach cars are going straight to our Maple Leaf apartment complex. So they have somebody that's relating communication, but all of them are not. So that's the scenario where we are right now. And, uh, it's, we're seeking funding, we've been in contact with the governor's office, we've been in contact with the Cook County, Will County, the D H S, Will County Health Department. And about, that's about all that I can think of. Manager Scott's been on the phone for the majority of the day, dealing with the South Suburban Mayor's Management and Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and everybody's trying to come up with a mechanism to regulate the door. And I think we all here, Jill, Theo, Gina, Karen, Janelle, Donna, Liz, Dee, we all got, we all care about people.
Yes.
We all care about people. And it could be a humongous drain upon all of us. And you know, sending them, when we sent them back, it was not out of illness or ill favor. We just don't have the resources here in University Park at this time to accommodate them. It's, you know, right now, we don't have any seating in the bus shelters, we don't have any seating in the streets. And fortunately, they're accommodating there in Maple Leaf. But sooner or later, we're gonna get, we're gonna get oversaturated. So I think in our best interest, and I'm glad everyone has a need to, had this brief meeting, to put something in place. And we can always come back and amend this as far as fines going and pound of other vehicles and things like that. They just can't drop the burden on us after Clear Blue Sky. So if anybody else has any comments, that's as much as I, I know that I.
Right, uh, I just didn't, I had to, what's the, what's the word? I'm not, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, we, we just got, another week ago or something, this, these were.
What are the, uh, what are the regulations?
These are, these are some of the examples that we got from, I think, Montana, and we'll help with this one with the Shella Park. And there was some from Aurora. So everybody is grabbing it right now, but I think we're the first municipality in the Southside to implement this outside of Tilly Park, maybe the Mass Mass here, driven schedule, board meeting. But outside of Tilly Park, we're taking aggressive actions to ensure that we have something. Come here, Liz.
So I was working with attorney Murphy, trustee Theo had sent some that, uh, that attorney of Welsh had, I guess, provided to him. So we reviewed ordinances from Melrose Park, Cicero, Rosemont, uh, or some of the others. It's mostly northern communities that have already done this, like the mayor said, Tilly Park was the first to do this yesterday. And I am gonna have the evil put this information out. This is something that was disseminated through Cook County. Even though I understand that the vast majority of University Park is in Will County, the reality is Cook County is the second largest county in the nation. They got a lot more resources, a lot more money. They are in trouble now, trying to put together some type of reimbursement grant. I spoke with someone internally in Will County, I mean, in Cook County, who told me that they're in the process of putting this together, so they haven't even announced it. We have a meeting at 3:15, uh, a few minutes ago with President Burton Winkle. So in this ordinance, this is, out of all the ordinances that we looked at that have Shella Parks, I really like theirs because it addressed the needs of the residents and visitors to University Park. And it delves into the unscheduled, they call them rogue buses, rogue, I don't know.
Yeah, rogue buses.
In the city of Chicago, but it is basically dealing with the unscheduled intercity bus, dealing with inclement weather, severe weather that the migrants now have to deal with. We saw migrants getting on with, with white sheets, flip flops, babies. So this is like a humanitarian issue. Um, it deals with unscheduled stuff. So something that came about today in the meeting from Ted Berger, who is the executive director for the city of Chicago Office of Emergency Management and Communications, was the landing pads where they're supposed to be dropped off. So if anyone comes and gets people off of the bus, they get off the bus and they drop them off, it's $750 per ordinance. This is pretty much in alignment with what the other municipalities, Rosemont, Rosemont, municipalities pass. So it's $750 that we're going to hit the bus owner operator with. Uh, and we can also, if needed, impound in the bus. So this is similar to city of Chicago, they have a $3,000 fine. But, so when people said, well, we didn't properly plan for this, nobody planned for this. We were just on a call with every single municipality, everyone scrambling, like I said, we are literally Matisse call, other municipalities, I had a call from Hazel Press, they can afford the draft ordinance that you all are getting ready to pass tonight. Uh, I spoke with Reagan from Richland Park, I spoke with Christie originally Friday evening about this. So this was passed by the city of Chicago by Mayor Brandon Johnson sometime around last night. Within less than 48 hours, as a direct result of the ordinance that they passed, what they started doing was shifting the buses out to all the suburbs. So Aurora has gotten several, if I understand. Um, so we're trying to figure this out. My ask to them was, uh, we are trying to absorb as many of these people as we can that come here, they're his. I informed President Burton Winkle and the others that we don't have anything to do with Maple Leaf taking them in, but they're here. And my question is, when they come in, we, you know, employees were giving away, we were giving away our hood yesterday at the talk. We had a couple coats, people were, you know, whatever we had, trustee, you had blankets. But my question to them was, we need money, we need resources, because I said we need a translator. Not everyone has a village home, so we need a translator. We would also like money so that we can hire our legal people just to deal with this, because now this is becoming an everyday reoccurring event. Uh, the other things that, you know, you have to look at, immediate supplies, as soon as they get there, these people didn't even have socks. They were huddling under the metro, which of course we as may all know, the trains, the stairs collapsed. So there they are, under the clap, and I'm like, you can't be under there. They had on blankets, and I'm trying to explain to them, they couldn't even understand, there was a language barrier. Um, so this is basically what this is gonna address. We're hopeful that this is gonna curtail the activity that's coming through University Park. And in the meantime, they said the governor's office, um, is trying to come up with some type of funding to give to municipalities. Cook County is trying to put something together that's like into a reimbursement grant for substantiated expenses that municipalities incur. So we're in conversation now, there's nothing available now, this is what they told us on the phone with Mike Correct Chief, and they're trying to put something together. So we're not behind the eight ball, we are being proactive. We are literally the second municipality in the South suburbs putting this together. But like she said to all of the mayor's managers today, um, we don't, they don't have anything somewhere in place. But I think this is a start. So they would have to notify this ordinance, they would have to notify the police chief, deputy chief, or another designated, which maybe will be myself, since we don't have a deputy chief. And they would have to notify, and it would have to be within a reasonable time, because in the city of Chicago, the issues, they were dropping off at 3:00 in the morning on the corner. And there were, there was no city of Chicago staff capable of driving around the city trying to accommodate these people with food and other resources. So they have to give us advance notice, there has to be a certain window of time in which they have to do that. And if they don't do that, then the fines can sit at $750, and if applicable, we will tuck. Um, so that's all I want to hear. One of the things that it says, it's a first come, first served basis, they have to submit an application, that would be the operating service, and it should be approved by the director of police, the deputy chief, or a specific, you know, designated, designated, and the date and location. They would have to drop off these passengers between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, at no time on a Saturday, Sunday, or designated federal, state, or village legal holiday. Uh, with that being said, and they cannot arrive any sooner than 15 minutes before and no later than 30 minutes after the approved, uh, the arrival time. Or there's a $750 fine per passenger. So one of the buses, I think, yesterday had 43. Today, the chief said that the other one that came in had 40. Uh, on Friday, I can't even remember the number it was. And then we have a few that came in on Saturday and Sunday just via the train. So what they're encouraging us to do is not to, at this moment, let them get off and do whatever. We're encouraging the bus to turn around and to go to the landing pad, and also to notify them. So I'm gonna make sure that Eva posts this information. Um, if any residents happen to see these rogue buses coming into the community, we would really appreciate it if you would reach out. I know that, I believe, personnel from the fire department notified us of the buses today. So, uh, if people could just be vigilant, if you see these buses, to let us know, because this is dealing with the health and safety, not only with the residents, but these people, because they're humans.
Uh, what about the sign by the metro station on the east and the west side?
We are gonna look into putting them in and also cameras.
And yeah, so.
Today, the government, that's a boy, the metro station.
Probably so, probably so. So just for the record, I had Mrs. Mosey contact Metro just a little while ago. And it seems like one of the things that they're looking for by the points of the community stations is because they're looking for a pass to get on the train, go downtown to Chicago, where more resources are. So we're asking Metro for maybe 100 plus passes to have on hand, just to see, in case we do get them and they're looking to get downtown, we still have something accessible for them to be able to go. Because they don't, our metro station is, uh, computers or smartphone, and we don't have the ability for them to pay on our metro station. So that will kind of bridge the gap. And if we do happen to get some squanderers or some left behind, that they'll have access to the community station near the ride Metro.
Yes, because Aurora is feeding them when they arrive.
Yes, of course.
Then they're paying for their, their bus passes to go back into the city. Obviously, we don't have the same type of budget that Aurora has. So that's one of the things that we're asking for. Um, they also mentioned maybe having a bus service. They mentioned some, um, some ways that they thought, uh, I think it was Ted Berger mentioned, uh, maybe having municipal vans and things like that. Also, I wanted to mention as far as people with, when these asylum seekers come in and they need healthcare, Cook County has already seen over 17,000, they've already helped, they said over 17,000 asylum seekers. So they, she said that President Burton Winkle said she specifically set aside money for healthcare, because that's obviously the vocal Cook County does is deal with healthcare for people who are injured. So, um, we can direct them to Cook County for health services.
Does, does Will County have a living place? Is it just, no?
We put it to call, not yet.
Not yet.
They're scrambling to try to get two names in place now, because they see that they could affect not just University Park, but other, other factors in Will County as well.
And now we're gonna inform, and, and, and Metro Police.
Oh, Metro Police.
They've been needing us there.
Metro Police, I'm talking to them.
Yes, they've been there, yes. They've been there.
Where about you?
We're gonna have to go back to your ordinance.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Everybody, of course, trustee Brooks and trustee, uh, Thomas, great trustee.
Yeah, um, mayor, uh, I just wanted to give the much incentive of how fast this has developed. Um, I believe the night, the very first night, you know, the chief was there, uh, the Mooney Emergency Management was the one who had called me only to ask, did we have anything in place? And actually, when we called, I thought it was just more of a question of, you know, you know, what were we doing for those who live in town? And then he said that he was dispatched, he, uh, he's like their deputy director. He said he was dispatched by Will County Emergency Management to say that they were on the way. And, uh, pretty much, you know, from there goes the, the, the dialogue of what you had experienced that particular night. And then, um, because I notified the chief, uh, you know, and the village manager, be attached. And, you know, you all were, you were on top of it. The second part of it is that yesterday, um, I think you all were there. And I just so happened on my way back from Tilly, uh, from dropping Karen off, I was just gonna drive by and just see how you all were doing. And a second bus, when I came in to tell the village manager and the chief, a second bus had already came, but they flipped around and they, I don't know if Metro Police sent them out. So when I did get to the east side of the lot, that's where Metro Police was, while the bus that the mayor and the staff had tended to was on the west side of the, uh, metro station. So obviously, this has happened at such a fast pace, and actually, this has, I'm not gonna lie, I was kind of, you hear it on TV, you seeing it on TV, but to feel it, to feel it, and then know you're a legislator and you need to do something about it, that's really like one of the first impacts compared to even like this aqua water situation. As a board, we gotta do something ASAP, because, um, the village manager and the chief, their faces were like, like, another bus? When I told him yesterday, like, yeah, it was a second bus, I was coming up there to catch the mayor and the village manager and the chief, and the second bus was already there. So that's just much incentive to say that, I, at this point, if you watch the news, uh, what was it last night, now I'm soaking in the information, Monday, they had 17,000 across the border. And the question I, that I have is, how many of them are on their way to University Park? Knowing what Chicago just did. So, uh, also on the flip side too, understanding the skeleton of the police department, when I mean skeleton, meaning that chief and his, and usually his sergeants, they're working at bare minimum. So it's, it's the resources when they come to them, trying to redirect, uh, when it comes to our, uh, what to do with these kids or, or actually these people on the bus. The next one too, that I have a concern, that the village manager, that she said was a health concern, I mean, let's talk about the strain that it may put on our fire department. Our paramedics can have one on, on who, uh, east side of town, west side of town. What if they become strained with a bus that comes in with sick kids? Because let's be real, they're not, they may have COVID, and that whole bus may be infected. So I'm just putting it that I want the public to know how fast the impact this had happened and how quick, just by, what was that, three days there? This is happening like a three day. So in three days, the town was already by, and it might, it put my eyes at least four buses in with the minimum, you know, of 40 people. So, um, that's just much incentive of, of something that is not going to die away, obviously.
Mayor, I have a question myself.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm here because we just had this meeting and they just told us the landing on this. I would also just like to add for the pickup drop off location, I would like to amend this ordinance just to add this address, 800 South Des Plaines, because this was made prior to the meeting today at 3:15. And they just notified all of us that this landing pad location. So I would like to then, to have the passenger pickup and drop off location at 800 South Plain, Des Plaines Street.
Chicago, good.
In Chicago, correct.
And what about? And your second landing pad, is that over there?
Oh, okay. No, but this is so much closer, they're probably gonna go here and go to, you know, the other one is for those suburbs up there, but yes, we like that.
So if this thing continues, don't be surprised if they're starting to look for staging locations in Will County.
Yeah, yeah.
So can I add something? Yes, sir.
So, um, University Park Police Department has been liaising with all our other South suburban police departments and the Cook County Emergency Management, Allison Anderson, she's been great. We've been in contact with her, I was on the phone with her at 6:00 this morning. Uh, we've also been in contact through our, through our networks, chiefs' networks, with Lyle, Aurora, Keith Cross, he's the chief out there, I was talking to him at 6:00 this morning also. So, just so everyone can know, all the chiefs of police are working together to try to figure this out. Uh, through my network of chiefs of police, I've been asked to, after this is passed, to pass this alone to all 65 towns in the South suburbs, uh, to make sure, because you have more and more towns that are wanting to do the same thing with being inundated. But, uh, Will County EMA, Mooney EMA, uh, have been great, the Metro Police Department, they've been great lately. Every time I've called and told them, hey, we got somebody coming, they've come out. Uh, but there's also a second dynamic that's happening. So, to give you a little background, we have it going in both ways. So we have, uh, migrants who have already received services from the city being given Metro fare to take the Metro train out here along the Metro. Uh, and then they wind up here. And then we have what's happening now, the bus is showing up. And we've been making the operators of the bus and the chaperones, that's how we put it, chaperones, from Operation Lone Star, those are people that are, that's one of the, that's chaperoning the immigrants group. And also, they were found out, it was the Texas Department of Emergency Management, they were on the bus with them also. And so we were making them, um, we were kind of suspecting that maybe they was just gonna drop them off and then leave. We didn't allow them to leave until they bought tickets on Metro for all the, uh, immigrants to get on Metro and head to the city to get, uh, services from the city. And Metro Police Department, they really helped us out there, they hung around and made sure they got the train and then headed out that way. So we've already put the word out to, uh, to some of these operators. I have addresses, phone numbers, and emails for some of these operators that are coming from Texas. Uh, with your permission, after you pass, that's how I'd like to send this ordinance down to them, so they can have heads up. You know, if you're not gonna be right, then you don't have the words.
So you want to do a little amendment this Tuesday?
So, so we're discussing this amendment, so we're looking at section six.
Six.
And it says passenger loading and unloading day and hour restrictions. So it says unscheduled, the next one, I'm gonna do passenger loading and unloading locations. Unscheduled, unscheduled intercity buses shall only load or unload passengers at a location authorized by the director or police or deputy chief of police. And that should be, then it could probably be, would shall be 800 South McRae Street, city of Chicago.
All right. So Felicia, what I was, the question I had was, uh, this trustee Brooks, if, um, so that we don't have to go through the ranting to add with the village manager, say, wouldn't you put it following the section six?
Six.
Of, uh, you know, the exhibit of the ordinance. You know, the exhibit of the ordinance.
But if it was, if those were concerned, I'd have to put, like I said, if they, like, what if this place changes?
So what if the place changes? So.
Do we have that?
So what if?
Or just maybe put staging, or staging locations? Because it's both of them, is it staging? What's that?
They take locations. Be here to replace having that specifically designated, because that can change at any time. I mean, I'm just.
Further locations to be a map?
Yeah. Yeah, if it can change at any time.
Then they can.
Well, because then you're going to have to change it in here. You see what I'm saying? You know, put it in here, and you only have that particular, that specific area. You're going to end up having to change it in here. So I don't, I would want to do that.
That makes sense. Maybe even open in that just, we enforce our arguments. And as the situation happens, the chief or the deputy chief or the designate, whether the, you know, village manager, they can substitute Chicago or wherever. Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Yeah.
So trustee Brooks?
So if you're going to pass, since it's passed the way it is, then if there needs something amended, always come back in the meeting.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yes, sir, chief. So the way, this is my suggestion, is quit it. I can wait at official posting of the location of where it is. So it carries the same power as the ordinance, except that if the locations change, then I will post a new location. So it has the same power, but it gives more flexibility so you don't have to change it in the ordinance. You know, I can just change that. So after we do this, I can go straight to the police station and post it.
Why can't we just put it in the OEMC landing zone? So those.
No, it says the last line, last question, this shall, this is on the approved application when it's posted off.
No, I'm saying, this situation, where this update, it's safe to coordinate the movement of the constituents to approve OEMC landing zone at 800. That's just the 800. But if we put in an approved OEMC landing zone, that should cover any landing zone, right?
That's true.
So if we put, add that, it should cover.
So the Village of Cicero's, I'm looking at theirs, they actually have it on there. It says passenger pickup/drop-off locations. They must have got that heads up. It specifically says unscheduled inner-city buses shall only load slash unload passengers at locations designated by the commissioners, designated the following locations, 800 South Displain Street, west curb side of South Displain Street, immediately south of West Polk Street, Chicago Illinois 60607. And they're the only one I noticed that has that out of the other ones that I did review.
Because it might be some, like you said, that Will County might be mentioned to. So I was thinking, I don't know, to me, it's just like, whatever the loading zone is, it could be covered if it's saying, is this OEMC, what is OEMC?
Office of Emergency Management and Communication.
But that City of Chicago would have nothing to do with suburban Cook County.
Okay. We, I just say, whatever it is, I think we should, because like they were saying, I guess you would have to amend it. The attorney was saying, if they added another location, we just have to amend the ordinance. So I guess it's fine like that. To me, I just like to catch everything just in case. Because that, as we know, things are changing on a daily basis.
That's what makes it more flexible.
Yes, the way it is.
Yeah. If it gives us the opportunity to do some other things.
Yeah, okay, okay.
As long as we give the power to the chief, you know, those, who's responsible, I think, with it, the way it's written.
It works.
You know, like I said, chief, chief of outside.
Is there motion?
There's a.
Wait, Jim, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Donna Culture and Mrs. Scott. On yesterday, when I learned about the buses here, I gathered a conference, a lot of tons of them. So I called my neighbor Miss Taylor, I didn't get her right back, they get down to trustee Culture, and she was out with her husband. And in the meantime, Miss Taylor did get back to me, and she had pillows and comforters too. So we went by the village hall and show you how God works. He was there. So he had supported us there. Miss Scott said, come back. She had a big tray of salmon. So at that time, I came back at that, and we were able to disperse the comforters and the food to them. And all they could say was groceries. They were so grateful. So I just wish that we had more money related to that.
And even a donation place.
So that makes sense to a rally housing stock.
And I wanted to also send a special shout out to President Grant Michael's assistant. I called him right when everything was breaking down. He had the meeting hard for us, and he sent a bunch of food over to Make Believe immediately. So I wanted to say special thank you to him as well, to Adam.
Yes, indeed. My question?
That was, my question was, is there a location or spot here for the migrants that are already here? That people can drop off coats and blankets and stuff? Because, you know, with 13 grand kids, I've got five men of those. Some they've never worn. That, you know, coats, shoes, socks, all of them.
So we just, I didn't have to remember the things that we were going to do.
Maybe our family is, maybe some of our.
That's the key.
Yeah. They would step up in my house to bring my stuff there.
Jetty U stuff, not stuff you want to go play with.
Yeah, it would be something I would wear myself. But if they would step up and, you know, you got the relationship with pastor, you know, we can talk to him and the other lady.
I'm sure they were all in. And the school district. And just, and you know what, let's get this motion and stuff squared away. We had a great meeting with the school district, immigration, the library, and everything else. And is that Tracy from the library? So we're going to start, she's already taken and started, we're going to start setting up six weeks cycles of basic Spanish. And partnership with the churches, the school district, and the libraries in the community, and trying to bridge the gap, because there's definitely a gap. So we're going to do everything that we possibly can. Hey, man, I don't know who all went around with it, but every time I hear better term, it's a crisis. It's wild, this is my.
That's it. Gee, you should have lost.
No, I don't think.
I think the police has a board that should give this board a round of applause for being proactive and tackling shit.
I just have one question. So we know how our police department is, who's going to monitor? Okay, we can tell the residents, but like, they dropped people off at the metro. Somebody saw it like.
By coincidence, yes.
Dropped them off today at the golf on the side of the office.
Different bus?
Who's going to be monitoring?
So I don't know. I get, so.
Does the police got a lot of this?
So we, so the police department has preliminary, what we've done since we saw this was happening. We partnered with the university, they're going to keep an eye out for us. We partnered with the fire department, they're the ones that alerted us that the buses were coming today. And so we're partnering with some of our other partners in the area. Will County Forest Reserve Police, Will County Sherrys, Mooney EMA, and Will County EMA. So we're all paying attention. I was just on the call earlier today with a bunch of Will County chiefs. And where we all shared a bunch of information. And they're all closely watching us. They know, even though we're in the line and they're dropping off with us, they know that eventually, that we're going to deter them from dropping off with us. And now it's going to start looking for other locations. So we have some mechanisms preliminarily in place to monitor them. Meanwhile, my officers have been told to make sure that they pay attention to the metro station. I went by there four or five times today myself already, you know. So we're just doing our best with the resources we have right now to monitor those stations. All right. So the question is, there was a motion, or was there a motion to make an amendment? There was a motion to make an amendment. So there was a motion in the second on original, that legislation. Brooks, roll call.
So I just confirm with you, because I didn't see where we could have put that motion into the section. So I didn't see it, and then we should have answered the question. So that's my motion.
Okay, okay, just to give that kind of thing. So roll call, please, Madam Kirk.
Trustee Lewis.
Most high.
Trustee McFadden.
Most high.
Trustee Walter.
Most high.
Trustee Thompson.
Most high.
Trustee Williams.
Most high.
Trustee Brooks.
Most high.
Most high, Madam Kirk.
Mr. Mayor, that's ordinance 2023. That. 23.
23, okay. And is there a motion?
Motion.
A motion brought by Brooks, taken by Thompson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None.